So while we're waiting on that commissioners, having been on a lot of Zoom meetings, when you either during attendance, or if you're making a motion or speaking, it's helpful to say your name along with, you know, like with attendance, Jim Urban here, sometimes we can't see everybody on the screen. So that way we're hearing, again, it's a good practice taking attendance.
Okay, we're good.
All right, we're on Facebook Live now. All right, folks, I'd like to welcome everybody to our November 24th Zoom Planning Commission meeting. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Commission. These meetings are always a challenge technically sometimes, or just, you know, getting comfortable doing this. I know we've done it a couple of times. And so as Jim kind of pointed out, you know, if you, if you have questions or whatever, and we've got several folks on here, so you know, you'll have to speak up and then, you know, say who you are and then I'll, you know, try to recognize you or whatever as we move through this, this hearing today. So before we get started, I would like to, let's do a quick roll call of the commissioners that are on the Zoom Planning Commission meeting. And we'll go ahead and we'll start, Amy, I guess you want to, are you going to do that?
Free.
Free will do it.
Okay, not you will do the roll call. So let's go ahead and proceed with that.
Ms. Hagan?
Oh, here.
Mr. Elder?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Eva, are you here? Unmute your microphone.
I'm trying to unmute her. Okay.
Mr. Finney?
Sam's here.
Mr. Halfling?
Here.
Mr. Falvey?
Here.
Mr. King?
Try your mic again, Greg. Greg, we didn't hear you. Can't hear you. It's breaking up. Got a little bandwidth issue, sounds like Greg. Well, he's here, so let's move on and Greg, see if you can fix that while we're.
And Mr. Jeffries?
I'm here.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Ms. Bonet?
Here.
Mr. Klingefus? Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Ms. Nasser?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
All right, sound like we've got more than a forum here. So will you move into our agenda this morning? We will not do the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, just it's a little bit, would be a little bit awkward to try to do that. So we will move on in now to approval of the minutes from our last Planning Commission meeting. If I could, I'd like to get a motion and a second, and then we'll move in for discussion and any changes.
Mr. Chairman, my name was omitted from the meeting on the 27th. It is reflected on page four in the voting, but just on the first page in the summary, it's not on there.
Okay, Smith, we will, we will add that and make sure that that gets corrected. Can I go ahead and get a motion and a second on the minutes to be approved?
Move for approval, Mr. Tom Elder.
Okay, I think I recognized that Ms. Davis has moved to approve the minutes. Do we have, and who was the second?
Laura Bonet seconds.
Okay, I have a second. All right, now, we all move into any additions or corrections. And I've got the one from Mr. Smith, we'll add his name to the, to the record on the minutes. Is there anything else that we need to add or change to our October 27th meeting minutes? Okay, hearing, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. And if we would, just I guess hold your hand up so that we can, Jim, do you want to do that, or we want to do a roll call on the?
No, I think you can just do it. First ask if there's anybody in objection. It'd be easier to do it that way, and then you can assume everybody else is in favor.
Okay, got you. Are there, is there anyone that's supposed to approve in the minutes as, as submitted with a one, one addition? Okay, all right, well, those minutes will be approved as of for October 27th minute, meeting minutes. Can we do a mic check on Greg King now? Sure, Greg, go ahead. Still not hearing him.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go.
Yep.
Sounds. Okay, all right, we will, and Mr. Carter, I want to ask you this morning, being this is a Zoom meeting, do we need to swear folks in? Or, you know, are we okay with just moving on into the meeting?
Well, if they're going to testify, you need to swear to me.
Okay, all right, um, all right, we can, we can do that. Let's see, do you want us, all right, let's go ahead and swear staff in. I guess, Ms. Hachi, if you would, let's, let's swear the staff in, I guess, this morning.
He solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Okay, with that, I'll call on Ms. Hachi to read our two doctored items here this morning.
An application has been filed by the Rural Education Association of Kentucky for the approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 7, 47.0755 acres. The property is located at 7,47607 Friendship Drive, Peewee Valley. The proposed change is from R4 Residential, R1A Residential, R2 Residential, and C3 Commercial General Business to PUD Planned Unit Development District.
Okay.
Read the second one, too.
Yes.
An application has been filed by the Rural Education, Educational Association of Kentucky for the approval of a Planned Unit Development Master Plan, Development Plan on approximately 47.0755 acres. The property is located at 7,400 and 7,600 Friendship Drive, Peewee Valley. The proposed zoning is PUD Planned Unit Development District.
Okay, thank you. The first procedure that we all move into here is the introduction of the application by staff, which I believe would be Ms. Alvey, and then questions by the commission. And that's 20 minutes allowed for that. So Ms. Alvey?
Sure, I'm going to go through and share my screen here to for the presentation. All right, thank you. Good morning, Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning Development Services. As Ms. Hachi stated, this is a request for a zoning change on 47.07 acres to PUD, which is Planned Unit Development District. And then also they are asking for the approval of a development plan slash, I'm sorry, master plan slash development plan on that 47.07 acres. The overall tract size is 48.63 acres. 47.07 is in Oldham County, and then the 1.55 is located in Jefferson County. So this is an aerial view of the property outlined in red. You'll see the blue line here, that is the approximate location of the Oldham-Jefferson County line. This is the zoning map that shows there is a portion of the property that is existing R4. You have R2, R1A, and some C3. This is just a zoomed out version of the zoning map, just to give you a surrounding area zoning. This comes from the future land use map. You can see the anticipated future use based on the future, on the comprehensive plan and the future lane use map portion shows the property is, future use is anticipated to be institutional. This is the Peewee Valley City Limits map. So everything that is highlighted there in pink is the corporate city limits of Peewee Valley. So you will see that this portion of the 7607 is not located in the city as well as approximately these eight acres here. Site history, on November 26th of 1985, the Oldham County Planning Commission, Rebecca, recommended approval of a zoning map amendment from R2 Residential to R4 Residential to Oldham County Fiscal Court, that was docket 1392, on approximately 24.726 acres. So the existing nursing home facility would conform to the appropriate zoning classification and then be enlarged to accommodate for more office space and eventually allow a permit to be issued for construction of an apartment complex in conjunction with the nursing home facility. This request went to Oldham County Fiscal Court, who approved the zoning change in January of 1986. Regarding conformance with the zoning ordinance, the proposed plan appears to be in conformance with all zoning and subdivision regulations, with the exception of the one landscape buffer waiver, which is in your, included with your application. The property is not located within the hundred year pledge plane. And then you also were provided a copy of the Technical Review Committee comments and those, as well as they provided the appropriate development plan report as well. So again, the applicant is requesting a zoning map from R4, R1A, R2, and C3 to PUD. The property currently has 128 good nursing home facility located on it with approximately 30 employees. The applicant is proposing the following additions to create a life plan community, which they will anticipate six years to complete. They are anticipating, or sorry, they are proposing to provide an assisted living building that will have 38 rooms, a memory care facility, which is 21 rooms, an independent living apartment buildings. They're proposing 48 one-bedroom apartments and 78 two-bedroom apartments. Regarding the cottages and duplexes, they're proposing 32 units. They're also proposing a commons building as well as a maintenance building. So again, this is the overall master plan that was submitted. You'll see again, the property is outlined in red, and the blue line again is the Oldham-Jefferson County line. So phase one would include, again, the 32 cottages or duplexes, which are all here outlined and highlighted in green. The existing skilled nursing facility, which is 128 beds, is here in gold. To the south, you're looking at a 21-room memory care facility, a 38-room assisted living facility. This is the commons building here in purple again. And then this would be the independent living apartment. So again, 48 one-bedrooms, and it should say 78 two-bedrooms instead of 75. The applicant is proposing the following additions to the life plan community in future phases that will include independent living, additional independent living apartments, 10 additional cottages, and 10 additional assisted living units. So the future phases are all outlined in pink. So here at the very southern portion of the property is the location of the 10 future cottages. The future expansion here to the rear of the assisted living facility, that's where the proposed future expansion would be to add 20 additional rooms there. And then these two buildings would be the 24 two-bedroom independent living apartments here. So this would be the overall plan, if, once it was completed, phase one and phase two. Division 230 of the PUD Regulations, it is a five-step process. Concept plane review is the first step. So they did have a pre-app with us, and we went over their proposed project. Master plane review, which includes the zoning map amendment and master plan approval, development plan review, construction plan and record plat review, and site plan review. So those are the five basic steps when we review a, or the process for APUD development. The applicant has submitted the development plan simultaneously with the master plane review and zoning map amendment request. If approved, the next step would be construction plan review and site plane review, which would be performed by staff. The proposed buildings will be of craftsman-style architecture, and standards can be found in section I of the master plan development plan report. So this is a view of the memory care building here on the left, and then the assisted living building on the right. This would be the commons building here. This is a view of the memory care building. This is a view of the neighborhood cottages. Stormwater will be routed through storm sewers towards two onsite stormwater basins that have been designed and sized to capture the stormwater from the proposed project as well as from the northern watershed. This is their stormwater plan that shows the existing flow from the north that sheds onto the property, and then highlighted or circled here, white circle, that is the location of the two proposed detention basins. Section K, Community Impact, addresses the impact of proposed developments on school, water, sewers, police, and emergency services. A traffic impact study was performed and found based on, upon the volume of traffic generated by Brighton Heights for the year 2026. There will be minor impacts to the existing highway network. All approaches of the intersections evaluated will operate at a level of service D or better in 2026. Therefore, no mitigation is necessary for the roadway capacity as a result of this development. Section L, Site Design Standards, outlines exterior lighting, fences, and walls, signage, circulation, and vehicular use areas. Landscaping requirements will comply with or exceed the requirements of Division 300 landscape requirements of the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan. So these were some examples that they provided in the master plan report of what their lighting style will be, examples of the four rail fence, as well as the privacy fence, and their proposed signage. And then this will, the upright corner will be their internal signage throughout the complex. For section 230020, General Standards and Requirements, number four, compatibility states that that measure shall be taken to assure compatibility of land uses within a PUD itself and with adjacent sites. When a PUD abuts a lower density intensity land use or zoning district, a 50-foot perimeter buffer shall be provided in areas, all areas of the PUD adjacent to the lower density or intensity of the land use. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the required 50-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the northwestern property line. The buffer area ranges in depth from 40 feet to 10 feet. And in their justification in the master plan report, it's under item F, land use compatibility in the master plan report. Says due to tree line nature of the property lying with significant trees, the buffer already is established. So again, this is on your master plane report, but I just zoomed in to see. So the area that is green, that is the buffer that is being provided. The dashed line is the 50-foot required buffer. So you'll just see on, close to village two here, the rear portion of the building is in it. It's a small corner of this one. And then the other portion of it is just the private drive. The drive that will serve these units is what is encroaching into the required 50-foot compatibility buffer. The northern property line will also be lined with a four-board fence. So they're proposing a four-board fence along this northern property line. And then on the western property line will be a privacy fence in that area is located there. The applicant is also requesting a waiver from the required 50-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the southwestern property line. The proposed buffer width in this area is 30 feet. And again, according to item F, land use compatibility in the master plan report, the proposed location of the one conflicting cottage is approximately 60 feet from the property line, and the proposed height of the cottage will, will seemingly be less than the adjacent property utility building closest to the property line and the two-story house. So again, this is in the southwestern corner of the property. Again, the area highlighted in green, shaded in green, is the buffer area that they are providing. The dashed line shows the 50-foot required line. The portion of the larger tract at 7,400 Friendship Drive and all of 7607 Friendship Drive is not located within the city limits of Peewee Valley. The applicant is requesting annexation of these properties into the city of Peewee Valley. For section D, Summary Compliance with the Oldham, with Oldham County, multiple objectives are listed to show compliance with the comprehensive plan, specifically objective LU2-3, number four, which encourages the development of alternative housing options for senior citizens within towns and designated infill areas to include car care housing, shelter housing, and institutional care. Again, the future land use map does predict the future use of this property to be institutional, and the plan meets all the other requirements of the PUD Planned Unit Development requirements. Okay, so now this is from our site visit. This is looking into Friendship Drive from Highway 146. This just shows the posting of the zoning change sign. This is the north view from Friendship Drive. So this is looking from the center of Friendship Drive across the street, which is, this is the CSX Railway here, and then this is Houston Lake. And then this is just a further back view of that to show that intersection. This is the east view, looking, going back towards Crestwood. This is the west view of Highway 146 going towards Jefferson County. Again, this is Friendship Drive. These are the east adjoining properties. So these are the properties that are on the left as you enter into the project. This is the existing nursing home facility. This is just another view of the existing nursing home facility. This is the syrup pump station. And you'll see there is a site map here at the bottom, and the star shows the approximate location of where that picture is. This is the north view towards Highway 146. So this is from the three-fourths of the way into the property, looking back out towards 146. So this would all be the areas of the cottages along the property line there. This is 7607, so this is the vacant tract at the very front of the property. This is just another view of the vacant tract. This is 7610 Pollock. So this would be along the northwestern line here. So if you look at the vicinity map here, the blue square shows the location of the picture. 7606, which is a vacant lot. And 7614. The northern, this is the northern adjoiner to the lot number 26. So this is across Pollock. This is the rear of the property. So right now, this is the rear access road off of the intersection of Holly Gibson and Old Floydsburg. This is the zoning change sign that I posted at the rear of the property. This is the current access road. This is the east view, looking down Old Floydsburg Road. This is the south adjoiner, so this is across the street from the rear of the property. This is the west view, so this is looking back towards Remers Road. This is the tree line along, the existing tree line along Remers. So there's two sets of tree lines. There's one right along the road, and then there's another set here. This is their phasing plan that just shows that, and this was all part of their master plan report. So this just shows their estimated construction phase completion. So in summary, the applicant is requesting four different items. The first is a zoning map amendment change to the residential zonings in the C3 to PUD. They're also asking for a landscape buffer waiver of the required 50-foot perimeter landscape buffer as presented on the master plan. They are asking for approval of the PUD Development Master Plan Report. And then they're also asking for a PUD Master Plan slash Development Plan Approval. Tied to that development plan and master plan approval, there are proposed binding elements. The first is that there shall be no significant changes to the development master plan as presented at the November 24th, 2020 public hearing without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. A detailed landscape plan and lighting plan shall be submitted with each site plan review. An updated traffic study shall be required at the time of review and approval of the future phases outlined in section H of the Brighton Heights Master Plan Report. And also, the development plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan approval. And that is all that I have. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Right, Ms. Alvey, thank you very much. Folks, we have commissioners, we are down to about two minutes on our 20 minutes of presentation and questions. So if I could, if the appropriate, I'll ask for maybe a 10-minute extension here for, you know, for questions. I don't, is, you know, this is a large application and a lot of details. So if I could get a motion and a second, then we'll just take a quick vote and move into the questioning of the staff. And we have, we do have, Mr. Solomon is going to probably want to have some comments here, too. So if I could get a motion and to extend our time, and then we'll move into Mr. Solomon.
All right, Nick, second.
All right, we got motion and a second for additional 10 minutes of our, on the questioning of the presentation of the applicant and our others in support of the application. So is there anyone opposed to that? Okay, well, it'll, it'll stand up pretty well, we'll add 10 minutes to our questioning time here. And Mr. Solomon?
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, I saw Barry Hampton made the motion, and Ed Halfling made the second. Just to recognize who that, who did that for the record.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have one clarification while I get the floor. It's real simple. There is no action being requested in the Jefferson County portion of this. Amy showed the master plan, and you saw there was a little sliver. So there is no coordination with Jefferson County on this project.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Solomon, are you our county engineer? Do you want to provide some information for us?
Yes, sir, please, and the committee, good morning, commissioners, you should have received this review comments that I provided, along with comments from the city of Peewee Valley and KYTC. It should be noted, as Amy, Amy actually mentioned already, the, there are about nine acres, I believe, of the property that are currently in Oldham County, not that are outside, they're outside the Peewee Valley city limits. We understand that annexation of that area is the plan. If that's the case, then as far as the stormwater ordinance is concerned, that would fall under the city of Peewee Valley. They're, they're not a co-permittee for our MS4, and therefore, this would be addressed by the city of Peewee Valley, and their engineer will review it. We will still review construction plans for approval from our office, just not from the stormwater section. There would be, because of the area of disturbance, of course, a KYR10 will be required from the state. As far as the traffic study goes, we did review, I reviewed the traffic study and agree with that study. They utilized streetlight data, which has been made available by Kipta during the pandemic to substitute the change in commuting. We've discussed this in SRC and other venues. With that data, again, we agree with Ms. Zimmerman's assessment. However, we do observe, she mentions a level of service D for the Friendship Drive exit. And while level of service D is considered acceptable, we would like to continue discussion with the developer regarding potential improvements to that intersection. However, none are required.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Solomon?
No, but I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Alvey, is there anything else, anyone else that needs, as far as staff-wise, needs to provide any information for us?
Uh, no, I believe the city engineer is on, yeah, he's connecting to audio. He's connected to audio, so let's see. If he has any comments.
Okay. Chris, are you on, online here?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, I'm having some computer problems, so. Yeah, hang on, it's trying to kick me out again. Yeah, hang on. It's trying to kick me out again. Hold on. I can't get everything to work. Well, yeah, so I can go ahead and provide comments. Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm the city engineer for Peewee Valley. We've reviewed the traffic study. And while we do agree with the traffic study. We still have some concerns over the safety of that intersection at Friendship Drive and Kentucky one forty six. And so our thought was, we really wanted to request that. The developer working with Oldham County and working with Peewee Valley. Take a look at whether there could be some type of improvements made, whether that is a signal which we don't think would happen. Some type of additional turning lanes that could be added, maybe not initially, but at some point. Based on the amount of traffic that increases. And then lastly, I guess if there's some way to warn motorists a little bit more regarding the upcoming crossing. Whether that's some flashing yellow lights, striping out the intersection, you know, traffic does back up there quite a bit. During certain times and people won't be able to get out, won't be able to turn in. And so. You know, one of the things that we've done with different cities and KYTC is even doing this now. Is to stripe out the intersection to alert motorists that they need to be able to not block that intersection to turn in and out. So. And then lastly, there are some reduced speed limit signs as you come in from Jefferson County heading east. And we would ask that the speed limit signs be pushed back a little bit to warn motorists a little sooner to. Be able to slow down before they get to that location.
Okay, is that, is that all that you have for presentation?
Yeah, that's really all that I had. You know, I guess one last thing is, you know, Houston Lane. Comes in from the north and ties in across the street from Friendship Drive. And so that that just kind of amplifies the complicated intersection even more. Just because it's not at a perfect ninety degrees. It comes in at a slight angle and offset. And so, you know, we don't, we don't think at this time anything could be done with that, but from a long term perspective. If there was a way to fix that too, we'd fix that as well.
All righty, and just wanted to, you know, make everybody aware, you know, that is a state highway, Highway one forty six is a state highway. So. You know, the planning commission doesn't have a lot of control. You know, that would be transportation, you know, would. You know, you all would have to work with them in in order to address those issues, especially like moving a, you know, a speed limit sign, things like that. So that's. Really something that, you know, that the commission doesn't have much say over on, you know, when it comes to state highway, you know, access and and those type of issues. All right, Mr. Krupin, thank you. I'm sorry.
Peewee Valley Police is on as well, and they are going to comment on behalf of the city police.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Who is it that's we speaking?
It's Greg Laramore.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is Craig Laramore, Chief Police, Peewee Valley. Got a few concerns about the traffic. Right now, when when we have an incident on seventy one, we have. I'm gonna call it almost gridlock in Peewee Valley because traffic gets pushed onto LaGrange Road. We have a lot of issues with that. We also have issues rush hour and school letting in, coming in session and leaving. One big concern I have is the the age of the residents that will be living there. I deal with a lot of drivers on a daily basis. That have diminished skills, reaction time. Hesitations pulling out into traffic as it is now. I would really like to see potentially a a light at that intersection. I know this has to go through the state. To where, you know, it's triggered by traffic on Friendship Drive coming on to LaGrange Road. To assist older drivers and getting on to LaGrange Road. Again, certain times of day, it's it's hard enough for your average driver to pull out. Much less somebody that's again dealing with diminished driving skills and et cetera.
Okay. Appreciate those comments. Yes, sir. I'm Mr. Laramore. With that, commissioners, we're we're back down to about three minutes on our time. So we'll go ahead and and open it up for questions from the commissioners. To the folks that have presented as far as the staff, any questions for staff at this time? Do anybody, any of the commissioners have questions that they want to ask the staff or anybody that has presented so far this morning?
John Falvey is raising his hand.
Yes, sir, John.
Yes. And I don't know who on the staff would answer this, but under that PUD. Are there height restrictions at all? The four story building kind of. Would stand out in Peewee Valley. So I don't know, under the PUD, they can just request anything, but. That's a tall building. So is it height restrictions maybe in Peewee Valley or Oldham County? In surrounding neighborhoods.
Ms. Alvey?
Um, there, there are no height restrictions in P in the PUD zoning classification. Again, they set their own parameters. You'll notice that they do have on the development plan that every time. I don't have mine pulled out here in front of me, but I can grab it real quick. It does say if they increase the setback of the building, then the the height of the building can be increased as well. So there are no set. Height restrictions in the PUD regulations because again, they are basically designing their own standards, including height. Landscaping, lighting, design standards, aesthetic standards for that community.
And and if I'm correct, that that building is a multiple story in the front. It's only three stories around the back. It's a four story. And it is also in the center of the development plan. And you really won't see this from Kentucky one forty six either.
No, but the surrounding neighbors sure will see it.
True, but again, it's three story on one side, four on the backside.
Yeah, I noticed though on their rendering, it 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 only shows three story. It doesn't show a four story. I don't know if that was convenient or not, but in their renderings, they don't show the independent living building in their renderings. Which is the four story.
Yeah, that would be the question for the applicant when they get, when we get to that portion.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the independent living building that John's referring to, two things, one, can a binding element be put in place to restrict the height? And secondly, can a binding element be put in place so that they can't be converted to market rate multifamily?
Yeah. Well, as far as the height goes, if you choose to approve the development plan, it will be limited to what is in the current development plan. So when you hear testimony from the applicant about the height of the building. You don't, I think, necessarily have to place a binding element on it unless you don't approve the development plan. As far as a binding element related to the conversion, we always put in that there are multiple places where we put in. The plan only applies to the one that was approved by the planning commission today. You'll hear testimony that this is going to be for the, you know, it's gonna not going to be market rate. I think we're protected by the fact that if it does change, that binding element would would be in place. And then also, I think the city probably has an interest in that same subject. So. Again, we we can either specifically spell it out as a binding element about conversion, or we can just, again, you know, as always. It has to comply with the plan that was approved today.
Okay, and any changes to the plan would be planning commission approved in the future, not staff level review?
That's correct. And I mean, unless there's a tweak, you know, the road zigzags, but anything in terms of lane use. And I think that the city also would want to review that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we we have run out of time on our question. Do we, do we have some more questions? I don't want to rush, you know, rush through this. I want to be able to, you know. Get the staff to answer our questions. Are we comfortable moving into the presentation by the applicant at this point?
Chairman.
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we extended ten more minutes for questioning by commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Douglas moves that we extend the the questioning for another ten minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Falvey seconds. Do I hear any opposition to that motion? Okay, we'll extend the the questioning of the staff for another ten minutes. Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas.
I have two questions. One first is the technical question for staff, either Mr. Urban, the Southie. On the proposed binding element for number six, each development. Plan or site plan must comply with all established, and that's our typical word, federal, state and county ordinances. Should we also include the city of Peewee Valley ordinances or?
Yes, we could. State and county and city ordinances would be appropriate. Sure.
Okay, that was one. And then my next question would be to. I mean, since we're on a staff level, either our city engineer or either. The city of Peewee Valley Chief of Police, either one can answer this question. My concerns are, my question is, was there any discussion with the fire department with traffic analysis on the condition of them? With additional traffic with them exiting out on to one forty six off of Friendship Drive from the fire department? Were there any discussions with anyone regarding that?
Chief Police, Craig Laramore, I've not discussed it with the fire department, no.
Do they have any issues now that we know of?
To my knowledge, there are no issues.
And there's also, you have the TRC comments and Chief Hamilton was present at that meeting and they didn't raise that as an issue.
I saw that.
Yep. So I think the appropriate question would be to the fire department, not police or staff, but they didn't.
That's why I asked him because I wasn't sure because a lot of times when you have when issues, when people bring up about traffic. You know, the issue is, is the fire department. So I just, I just saw that comment in the TRC. I didn't see.
Right, okay. All right, is that all, Mr. Douglas? Okay, anyone else? Any commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have another one.
Yes.
Um, how is the construction and traffic going to be handled? Will it, will it enter the site from one forty six across from Houston at Friendship Drive?
That'll be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Anyone else have any questions for staff? Okay, I don't, don't hear anybody. And if you, if you do have a question, you know, speak up so that you'll be on the screen and we can see you because. I'm limited to like five folks here on the screen at one time. So if you raise your hand, I sometimes, you know, won't see that or won't recognize it. So just speak up and then that'll put you on the screen. Mr. Urban?
Mr. Chairman, if you would, just anybody that's not speaking, please remember to mute your microphone.
Okay, all right. All right, any, any additional questions from the commissioners to staff before we move into the presentation?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Ms. Davis.
I'm particularly concerned about the traffic on one forty six and they're not being the traffic line. So who would address that? Look again to adding a traffic light. That would be a very dangerous situation there adding all that traffic. And it's already backed up in the afternoon. It's really bad.
Right, well, just just be careful about testimony this morning here. Question would be fine. And Mr. Urban, can you answer that?
Well, again, this is under the discretion of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and Amy sent out last night. Comments from the Transportation Cabinet. The city has requested certain actions and trying to coordinate with the Transportation Cabinet. It it would be all up to the cabinet as to whether or not. They would approve any recommendation. So I think we do have to defer to the Transportation Cabinet on that.
Ms. Davis, any other question? Okay, all right, anyone else of the commissioners that would have questions for staff? Okay, I don't hear anything or see any hands go up. So before we move into the presentation of the applicant and our representatives and others in support of the application. Let's take a ten minute recess here and then a little break and then we will move right into and when we come back. For that, after this break, about ten minutes, it'll take just a few minutes for Ms. Alvey to get us back on Facebook Live. So. You know, we'll take just a two or three minutes to get back on online. So let's go ahead and and take a quick break here. Make sure you mute your microphone. You know, if you haven't, and then we'll come back here just a little bit before ten o'clock. Thank you.